I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the record session of Golden Dale City Council for March 7th, 2022. I don't know how far we got from the march, that's where we've done it. We have a full council tonight, and we don't have a public hearing, but we need to have a motion to either approve, amend, or change the agenda and the consent agenda. We have a motion.
It's been moved there.
It's been moved and suggested to approve the agenda for this council session and the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We're going to have two very, very good, interesting presentations. After the REDS presentation, Commissioner Dan Christopher has asked to make some remarks, which we really appreciate very much, and then we'll go to the second presentation after that. And with that, I'll call on the REDS team.
All right. REDS team is just me and Commissioner Christopher for tonight. Are we able to get the slides on the screen? So I'll take you back a little bit. My name's Jonathan Lewis, by the way. I know many of you, but I'm the Director of Support Services at the hospital, Clickitat Valley Health. I've lived in Goldendale about nineteen years now. It's hard to believe, it's nineteen years, but it's been nineteen years. And with my involvement with the hospital, we're trying to find grants and different ways to fund the infrastructure upgrades. We have things at the hospital that are from the 40s, and I'm very into antiques, but not when it comes to healthcare. So as part of that, we have been working with Representative Moss Brucker, and she's very interested in concepts around local-produced and used energy, district heating and cooling, and those sorts of things. She went on a trip to Norway a few years ago to kind of explore those systems over there. It was very interesting, and kind of got me going on that. So we've had some community meetings about how we can do infrastructure upgrades at the city, and at the school, and at the hospital, and maybe find creative ways to meet some of the needs that are in all of those buildings. So that's sort of where this came out of. Do you want to go to the next slide there? That one. We did a workshop sometime in 2019, before the pandemic, with all of these entities that came together and looked at our infrastructure. And out of that workshop came an idea of a microgrid, where we would combine the power of the electricity for the schools and the hospital with batteries and solar backup, so that in a catastrophe, we would have this resilient district. That also included district heating and cooling, so we could share those resources. And out of that workshop came the opportunity with the Federal Economic Development Administration to do a regional economic diversification summit. So they, end of their fiscal year is the end of September, we said, yeah, let's do it. This was just last summer, we had about 12 weeks. We got the community leaders together from the county and the city, parks and rec, hospital, and they said, yeah, let's do that. So that's kind of what I'm going to be talking about, was that process, what came out of that, and some of the opportunities that that hopefully will be opening up going forward. So EDA is this big bohemian that runs all of economic development on the federal level. And then, next slide there. The states are broken down into these local economic development districts. We're a part of one that's called MACAD, Mid-Columbia Economic Development District. It's a five-county district. And then our, on the more local level, the county has its own economic development office. So all of those entities work together, and oftentimes finding that if you're not on the list for all of those, all the way on up, your projects aren't going to get funded. So the REDS concept is for the EDA to bring together local entities and all the different federal agencies that might be funding projects, and have the local groups share the projects they have going on, and then the federal entities can say, oh yeah, my project can fund that piece, my project can fund that piece. Otherwise, you're on your computer looking up what federal opportunities are available, and you see these huge lists, and you don't know where or how to begin accessing those. So sort of this, this way to streamline some of that process and give more access to the local communities, to federal funding. So next slide there. So you all know where we live, Clickitat County, about 2,300 people. Our REDS project focused on central Clickitat County, and it was really hard to get them to do that. They wanted to do more of all of MACAD, and we realized that the REDS wouldn't be all about Hood River, because, you know, they take all the oxygen out of the room. So we worked really hard to say, central Clickitat is a region, we've got things going on, we need some love here. Next slide. In the county strategic plan, this central region where we live has been kind of earmarked to be a clean tech region, and that's mainly around the big wind farms, the other things that are going on. And then we have large-scale industrial sites. So we were kind of going off that plan. Next one. And then, when we started getting together, we gathered all of the planning documents that the city's done over the last 10 years or so, that the county has, that the hospital has, parks and recs. So we weren't, you know, saying, hey, let's invent and get ideas. We were saying, what do we already got? What are we working on? What's been sitting on a three-ring binder for 10 years? How can we move it forward? And we kind of shared with these federal people all of the cool things that are going on. We talked about the county building and the, next one.
Next slide.
The school and the needs that they have, good things that are going on the school, next slide. The hospital and our new wing, and our energy projects, those things. And then the observatory. We were hoping to do the REDS in person at the observatory, but COVID, so it was a Zoom thing. Went back. We also talked quite a bit about the potential in Goldendale for development. The gorge is having, and Goldendale is, having a building and livability housing crisis. And the county recently finished a build-able land study that went over all the cities in Clickitat County, and Bingen, White Salmon, Lisle, they're all hosed as far as build-able land goes. But Goldendale has a lot of potential for build-able land, so we talked quite a bit about that. Next one. And then, we went over kind of what makes central Clickitat County different from the rest of the county. We talked about kind of our sad story, the aluminum plant that was there, and then the aluminum plant, next one, that was, oh, and logging, how, you know, we had this robust economy in the 70s, 80s, that really was this two-legged stool, three-legged stool, farming, logging, aluminum. And then the aluminum plant, next slide, is not there anymore. Next slide. And then, when you go and meet with MACAD, or when the EDA sees our region, they see this story of enormous growth. Jobs are growing, the economy's growing, everything looks really good. So we were able to get, next slide, MACAD assigned an economist to the project, and they were able to pull out data on just the Goldendale, central Clickitat region. And we're able to see the story isn't all just growth in Clickitat County. You've got a lot of growth in White Salmon, you have some growth on the eastern side of the county, but in the central, you can see that orange line right where the aluminum plant shut down. We really had a depression that happened at that time, and we've been flatlined ever since. So we were able to show that. And, you know, that, I think, was a powerful story, that this is an area that has really struggled to recover from these huge economic drivers that we had at one time. So the REDS, one of the neatest thing I thought about it was that all the various agencies in our area came together and started talking about these things, and talking about how we can move them forward. So all the logos you see up there were involved in one way or another. Next slide. So what we did in the time leading up to the REDS was looked at all the projects we had, that everybody was trying to do, and we put them in buckets, so that we could talk about those and have breakout sessions, and various federal entities could get together in the groups and focus more specifically. And we also developed this vision, kind of based on strategic plans that are already out there, we tried to synthesize it a little bit. Next slide. So the buckets ended up being clean energy, based mainly around the Goldendale Energy Exchange, resilient, affordable infrastructure, and livability. Next slide. So the clean energy bucket has to do with a grant that the hospital got to put in a hydrogen fuel cell. So that's already in place, it's moving forward. And then this islandable microgrid that we're trying to do with the school and the hospitals. And then the thermal district, where we'd be sharing heating and cooling between the buildings, then potentially controlled environment agriculture. We talked quite a bit about food security and the challenges we have with ice storms and other things, where it's going to very quickly become isolated, and there's no toilet picker on the shelves, or food and other things. We talked about how that could play into STEM education and work more with the hospitals, and then potential for energy tourism. Next one. The resilient, affordable infrastructure included most of the city's projects, the wastewater, water and wastewater system development, broadband, the airport expansion, and a tourism loop, kind of a road improvement, beautification of the roads coming into town, all the way around through downtown and back out. Really nice plan developer on that. And then the livability, I know like the county is having a hard time hiring staff, because, you know, people want to come work here, it's a good job, but they can't find a house. We're having that same problem over and over again at the hospital. So how do we do this housing thing? What federal agencies, what state agencies are working on this? How can they help us? And it's not that we want, you know, a bajillion houses and a whole bunch of apartments built in Goldendale, but we just need a little bit more to grow to the level where we can be. And to take some of the pressure off, the demand that's already there, because things are getting way too expensive for people. The other thing we talked about was parks, trails, and recreation. The city started redoing their parks planning document three, four years ago. That needs to be finished. And then we talked about, rather than just having the city have their parks plan, and Parks and Rec have their parks plan, and the state have their plan, to try and do comprehensive plans. We're all kind of working together and making this really beautiful parks experience. We talked about the observatory primarily around an ADA-accessible ramp and telescope that they want to put on the party deck, not party deck, observation platform.
It might be a party deck when we're not.
And then we talked about Stonehenge, it needs some resurfacing, they have money to put in bathrooms, but who's going to take care of them, different things there. Childcare is a huge issue, we talked quite a bit about. Food security was also in this bucket, and then healthcare, we talked about the hospital wing. Next one. So the day of the REDS was a huge success. There were about 60 people involved, all the local people were there, great engagement from both federal and state partners, and I still am getting emails from these people, like, what do you think about this one? This one just came out. So having those contacts has been, contacts has been very, very valuable. So the challenges that we found primarily have to do with capacity, that we have small organizations that a lot of times can't develop projects enough to make them grant-ready. We have people with a lot on their plate, they, you know, they have a day job, and they're seeing projects go to Bellevue, go to these other places that have way more capacity to really focus on projects. We're seeing things to do with change in leadership, a lot, a lot of our entities are seeing people retire. I don't know where you're at with that. Are you able to make a job offer to somewhere?
Soon.
Soon, soon and very soon, okay. And those challenges, and people who know all of the projects, know what's going on, and how do those get handed off, and how will that work for us? And then the timing, these projects, these grant opportunities come up, and by the time we kind of have our heads around them, they're already sold, they're already gone. So, you know, those are challenges. And then continuing to collaborate and coordinate. A lot of times, the entities in most small towns, I think, are working and doing their own thing, but if they can collaborate a little bit more, there's synergies there. So the successes we found is we learned a ton about the partners that we could be dealing with, and people who can help us navigate some of these things. We learned a lot about planning grants that are available to help with that capacity piece. And I, like I said before, one of the biggest successes, which is just everybody coming together, there's a couple things already, so it's already helping to raise money for our community, the hospital. The USDA person that was at the REDS said we have some additional COVID money, it's a grant opportunities out there, and we were able to apply for a kitchen remodel that was COVID-based, and got a $700,000 grant on that already. And then, at the same REDS, there were some FEMA people, they said you really should go after the hazard mitigation grant for your, your microgrid, and we got approved for the first round of the application, and now we're moving forward to the final round. So some good activity already. And I think, Larry, you've seen some things come through on the wastewater treatment plan.
Yes.
You'll hear more about it. I think that's one more, maybe. So the next steps, we set up a REDS leadership team with Dan, myself representing the Chamber of Commerce primarily, Leslie from the hospital, Leslie Hebert, Larry, I'm missing somebody again. And then MACAD has some additional CARES funding, so they have a project coordinator assigned to the project for now.
For now, that's going to go through June-ish or so, and then we've got to figure something out, but.
Yeah. So that's all I have. Dan, do you have some more to add there?
Kind of, but mine is on a similar but different track. I would agree with everything that Jonathan said, and I would second everything he said. This is essentially strategy for economic development. This is the baseboard strategy that has been around forever, and I'm supportive of all of these projects. What I'm also going to talk to you today about is community development. So unfortunately, I didn't print it, I'm not, if I want to make sure she gets one.
Oh, thanks.
So let's see where we start, and let's see if I have any. I printed 10, so it should be close. So the Golden Dale REDS presentation focuses mainly on the traditional economic strategies that have been around forever. Part of that is today you will be hearing later an executive session about some economic development. I do want to mention on that project, I've been working on it for about a year, they really need an answer ASAP. So I don't know if you guys can, but I was told to ask you if, when you get out of executive, I know you usually hold a vote over until the next meeting, if there was any way you guys could vote today so that they can get an answer, and then republizize your vote next week, so in full transparency, you got double transparency, but that way they can have an answer for management who is cattle prodding them for an answer. So that's standard economic development, and there's more projects like that that I have in the works, but I won't get into today. The other thing I think we need to think about when we think, the new way about economic development, to me, is economic development through community development. So to me, if you build a community that the people that live there are proud to live there, that they enjoy the community, when people come in as tourists and they see the community, they will also want to live there. When they do, they will be like me, and they will bring their business with them, and then they're going to be hiring locals. So through community development, you not only raise and improve the lives of your citizens, but you also bring in that economic development node. With that, I have some projects I want to do, but this is your city, and I'm county in, so I stay outside your city unless I'm invited into your city. So I'm hoping that through part of the REDS collaboration that we've done, that we can develop a collaboration for community development projects as well, where you guys might be able to come up with a subcommittee for community development. I can bring county resources to the table, county economic development personnel, potentially dollars, grant writers, things like that. Of course, if it's in your city, you guys have full write-off on whether you want to do it or not do it, whether you want to sign a grant or not sign on it. I'm only wanting to help you facilitate what Larry, who's too busy to do any of that, because he's got everything else in the airport, and the wastewater treatment center, and all that kind of stuff, bring help to you to hopefully get some more projects going. One of those is I want to see a new splash pad and improved toddler playground equipment at World War II Park. I've talked to most of you, one of you didn't know what a splash pad was, so that's why you all have pictures today. There's the basic splash pad on the front of the picture, which is fairly cheap to do, and there's the fancy-pantsy on the third picture, which is a, was a half a million-dollar grant that city received to do that. The other thing in part of that collaboration, the way I see it anyway, is you've got some county resource coming, you've got the city involved in that, but I would also like to see a community partnership as well. I would love to see citizens of the area build a 501(c)(3) that's, you know, a Goldendale Community Development Foundation per se. So they would be able to accept community dollars, dollars from my personal wallet that I can't give you and I can't give the county. Philanthropists in town that are willing to contribute. There's also community development block grant dollars that are only available to 501(c)(3) corporations. So that could bring in the grant match part of this scenario. So what I'm proposing is hoping that you guys talk about it at a later date, decide whether you're interested in partnering up and collaborating, and coming together and seeing what your vision is, what my vision that you don't like, and, you know, figure out something where we can all come together, pool our resources, I'm not asking for any money from you guys. If I was, when these are all said and done, if I get zero dollars from you, that makes me perfectly happy. Because I don't want any money from you, I'm hoping to get it all elsewhere. I just need your permission to pay in your sandbars. So that's kind of the end of my presentation. Hopefully you guys can think about that in the next coming weeks or so, and see if you're interested in collaborating with some of the rest of us to get some, get some projects done. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Excellent.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment to Dan, and I think it's great that the city and the county can start working together, and this is something I've been thinking that we should have been doing this many years ago, but it's great to get off to a good start, and we'll, hopefully we can all work together and get some things accomplished.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Yeah, my last public works meeting, we talked about the issues with the city parks needing some updates.
Yes.
So I guess I would make a motion that we go ahead and set up a committee to work on community development and that parks plan update that John mentioned earlier, is the first thing that we consider tackling. And that committee could be, you know, some city council members, as well as members in the community as well.
I'll second your motion, Larry.
Good. Motion. Don't repeat it again. I've got to.
For the mayor to set up a committee, a community development committee with the first order of business to, to address the city parks plan.
Which is to set up a community development subcommittee, three, to be able to work both in the development of a parks plan, but also to develop more fully the excellent cooperation we have with Clickitat County as well, and with their partners. It's a very valuable opportunity for the city. We have a second.
I have a second.
Okay. Any comments or questions before we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think I saw any opposed. Thank you. Motion passed and unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner. Excellent. The next presentation is the update on the Clickitat County Administration Building and Parking Analysis, Gordy Kelsey and Dan Christopher on hand for that presentation.
I'll let him do the talking, I'll be here to answer your questions. For me, you might have.
Good evening, council members. I'm Gordy Kelsey, the Public Works Director and County Engineer, and we've been working, I've been working for about the last six years on the new building, from feasibility through the design and the actual construction. So we finished the first phase, which is the building itself, the major phase, but that's not the end of it. We still have a lot of parking lots to build and buildings to demolish. So that's phase two, and that's where we're headed. And I know there's been some discussions on parking and removal of the old Annex Building, Annex 1, which is the building where economic, or economic development used to be, Health Department planning, building, across from Federated Auto on Main Street. And so we took a little detour and looked at some options, because one of our big goals was during this whole process, was not to displace people from their homes. And so how could we accommodate parking and still with the property that's available, there's not a lot around the courthouse that isn't already inhabited or has homes, and so that was our challenge. So we tried to use our existing properties to meet those parking demands. So the, the building itself is in the central business, or the downtown commercial corridor, and so there's zero parking required, but we all know that's just, doesn't make any sense for the people that drive to the courthouse. And so we already had challenges with parking around the courthouse when there's jury duty and those kinds of things, and so we knew we needed more parking, especially when we moved everybody closer to the courthouse. So our largest lot that we had was about 50 spaces, and it is where the new building sits today. So our original plan was basically, this is where the new building sits, so you all have this, this handout. And so it's a white block that says New County Services Building on the right-hand side of that first sheet that you have. We have two buildings, Annex 3 and Annex 5, and they sit just north of the courthouse, and they're a purple block and a green block. And those buildings, Annex 5, was sold at an auction and is in the process of being moved by the new owner. Annex 3 is not able to be moved, so it will be demolished. It'll be the first building we demolish, and we'll start that on the 28th of this month. So it doesn't have any hazardous materials, so it makes it pretty easy to remove from site. And then Annex 5 will follow. The owner will take it out of there in three pieces. It came in as a modular, it was a modular that we bought from TLC, and it will go away and have a new life. So we also bought the Columbia, the bank's parking lot that sits to the south of the bank, and it's Parking Lot C, it's kind of a turquoise block about the middle of the So we get 32 spaces there. On the last Annex 3 and Annex 5, we get another 33 spaces. And then the largest block that kind of replaces where the new building sits is Parking Lot A, and it's a red block, and it sits right behind the jail, to the left of the jail, if you're looking at the sheet. And that will provide 46 spaces. So we had, I think we were 49 or 48 spaces on the, where the new building sits, so it almost replaces that. So the, I guess the question or dilemma was Annex 1. And so that's about a 13,000-square-foot building, an old building that's been around for a long time. There were people that said they were interested in the building, and so we, we looked at what possibility, you know, what other possibilities without displacing people, could we get the same amount of parking? So this is, this lot here, this yellow block on the left-hand side of the page, that is county vehicles and overflow parking. So we have a few more spaces, 26 spaces, not a lot, but we're, some of us are used to walking, and so it's good for us anyway. So that's our other lot, and this was controversial. We ended up taking the people that said they were interested in the building on a tour, and after they took the tour, they weren't interested anymore. So. So I think most people agree that the best thing to do with that old building is to demolish it. And so our plan is to move forward with that parking lot. So we did look at, there were three lots in this area, just to the left of that red block that's Parking Lot A, that came up for sale, popped up here just after the first of the year. They were not for sale before. There were our two residents, so we would not have considered those initially, but when they came up for sale, we looked at, okay, you know, how much would that cost us? What's the, the cost benefit to, to do that? It's a little closer to the courthouse, maybe it makes some sense. You know, if people are really interested in, in buying Annex One at an auction, because that's how we have to sell it. But like I said, we, the people that were interested are no longer interested, and so we're going back to that original plan to remove Annex One, which was what we had thought all along. So, so I know that there have been other, I've heard lots of rumors about what we were going to do, parking, parking building or underground parking or all kinds of stuff. None of those things are true. It's all at-grade parking, just a paved lot. And so our plan is, part of this lot here involves Grant Street and another request on your agenda tonight, which is a request for a vacation of that. So, so what we would propose doing, and I know it's on the, later on the agenda, but it's, it's kind of, I'll talk about it briefly with the parking to give you kind of an overview of what we're thinking. So the county purchased these two lots, which are just west of Grant Street. So the jail and the courthouse are here on the right side of that sheet, and that is, let's see, I think it's the last sheet on your, in your packet. So that's a 60-foot wide rideaway by 200 feet long. And what we would propose to do, this is the second sheet, this kind of shows the layout of the parking lot. Basically, we'd close off Grant Street from, through traffic from the south heading north, and that would just become a large parking lot. The alley would still have access through the parking lot, utilities would still be able to be there, but it would be oriented more for a parking lot and not a through street if you grant the vacation.
And we use that mainly for jury trials, and it's overflowed.
So that's basically right in the middle of that space that we would like to redevelop for that other parking lot. So let's see, so we, before we did this project, we had 175 spaces total. Like I said, there's zero required. The number of spaces after construction is 261, so that's a net gain of 86 parking spaces. So that will, that will help everybody, and they're all public parking spaces, so whether you're shopping on Main Street or visiting the courthouse, they're available to everybody. And that's during Monday through Friday, on the weekends, they're just available. So schedule for the rest of this work, demolition of Annex Three, which is, I think it's, it's back over, it's the purple, no, the green box, the old juvenile building, is scheduled to be demolished on the 28th. That's where we plan to start on that. And then we have some asbestos in Annex One that we'll have to abate, so we're working on permits for that. And then we'll demo that hopefully May timeframe. And then the parking lot there will follow the rest of the parking lots. The timing is, we're, we're targeting July for construction for those, so they'll be done this year. So I was kind of going back over my list of schedule that we did before we started construction, and shows us completing it this year, so that's always a good thing. Oh, you've probably seen the big hole in the front of the courthouse, and I've heard all kinds of things that that might be. It's not a swimming pool or anything like that, it's.
Parks and Rec.
We, we discovered two underground fuel tanks from the old courthouse. So those had to be dug up. I think we just exposed about this much of the top of the fill tubes for those, and so we had to dig those up, and then we had to dig up all the contaminated soil in the ground, and then we had to wait to get permission to fill the hole back in from Department of Ecology. So we got that. Actually, we got some of the permission that the water and the hole is not contaminated last week, and then actually today we got news that the DOE is going to release any further work at the site, so, which is really a huge thing, because they were talking about long-term monitoring and things. But they, they cleaned, cleared it for all clean and no further action, so that's a good thing. So on the 21st, the week of the 21st, we'll start pumping the water out, and then we'll fill the hole back in, and then the contractor can come back in and actually finish the front of the courthouse parking lot. So that'll all be complete this, before community days this summer. So, and all that'll, the front of the courthouse and the, and the new building will be available for community days, so. And that'll add more parking immediately once that's paved, the rest of the lot. And so it'll be a slow march toward having adequate parking. Right now, it is kind of tough, and, but it will get better.
Did want to point out, there's been.
Can I go up there?
The boss told me to go up here, I understand that. So one of the concerns is, we've had issues with our short handicap buses for senior services. They tend to get their $6,000 catalytic converters cut off when they're parked in the main parking lot over here. So one of the things we were going to do to potentially fix that was build a little bus garage, you might say, to keep those inside along with some of our lawn mowers, things like that for secure access. If I'm remembering correctly, you said that building, if we, if we go that route, that building will be about one-quarter of the size of the existing parking structure. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a, there's a block on, I think it's the third sheet into your sheet shows the development there, so it's.
So it would be a very small fraction of that, with the yellow parking spot. The other thing is, it's right now we have juvenile probation using this building until we get the asbestos removed from commissioners' offices and HR in the old building, so they'll be over here for about a year. Once they go over, this building will be available to be used for something else, which then this parking would also be available to be used for whatever this building was used for. So there's, there's further economic idea or economic development growth with having parking here, so we can provide parking here for whatever's going on. Just wanted to throw that out. Any other questions?
I understand there's been some conversation in regards to Annex One reclaiming, salvaging some of the brick.
Yeah, so Ken McKeon brought that up in one of our meetings, and I actually think it's a fantastic idea. So, and my teammates agreed. So when we do demolish that, we're going to ask Gordy to be very careful, well, as careful as he can be, with that company that does the demolishing, and try to save as much of that brick as possible and have it available for anybody in the community that wants it, because I can't imagine that some of this brick doesn't match some of the brick on the buildings over here falling off. So they might be able to mix and match, that might have some, we might keep a palette of that, because if we ever get a revitalized Main Street project, we're going to need a little bit of brick that matches. If the city's interested in building flower beds out of that instead of the round tubs that are on Main Street now. It's, it's history, so let's, let's see it reused is, is our thinking. It was a great idea by Ken.
Will you have like a staging area somewhere close where this will?
More than likely not onsite, because we don't want people diving through construction rubbish.
Right.
But it would probably be then picked up and located at, at either one of the other parking lots or something. We haven't figured that out.
All right.
But we'll.
Be close.
Yep, yep.
Excellent. You did a question.
Question on the parking lot A, I guess. Let's kind of get discussed later, I guess, but one of the questions is, would there be a drive, a straight way through from West Port to West Allen? And the concern being that is a path from the fire department? So even though it's going to be parking lot, would there still be a straight away?
The proposal is not to have a, a drive-through there, no.
So the proposal would be an entrance on the south side and an entrance in the alley on the west side, but nothing on the north side? That way you don't have people raging through there at a high rate of speed, but that, that would be up to you guys and your fire commissioner. Do you have a layout of what that parking lot would look like if Doug?
Yeah, it's the second sheet.
Yeah, second sheet.
Yeah. But basically, there's a loop through and no, no entrance onto Allen Street. And then access through the alley too.
Oh, so being, okay, I have a quick sentence.
Yeah, so we pushed the, you can kind of see on the south side on Allen Street, we pushed that parking strip that you guys redid a few years back, the gravel parking and curb gutter improvements out, so you get your, because right now the stop sign is pretty far away from the traveled way, and we have parking along that south side of the jail. I don't think everybody sees it. I know I, I've missed it before, so it would be best to kind of bump that out so the stop sign gets out of the street. So the other thing is too, we, we would redo Grant Street between Court and the alley, between Main Street and Court. That short little segment will be rebuilt. We have a lot of storm in there, stormwater improvements. It's, it's always interesting when you dig up the city street, what you're going to find, and where you think the catch basins are, there, there might be another one somewhere else too, so.
I'm wondering this too.
No, no, so there'll be the short segment between the alley and Main Street that we are not rebuilding. And so.
So that sidewalk right there, that's not.
Yeah, so we've worked with Doug to try and streamline, you know, so when he's plowing and can't really see the gutter line, where our improvements would be, and then I think one of the other things that had come up, there's a, there's a bump out there right now that sticks out nine feet into the road. That goes away, and so it gets narrowed down to, I think it's about three feet wide from the existing curb line, and that's to accommodate that drop for the ramp, the ADA ramps that we'll put in there. So it'll end up being two feet wider than it was before. So we had parking on both sides before we started construction. We only have parking on the, parallel parking on the south side, so it'll be two feet wider than it was before, when we're all done with the project.
Done Court Street.
Yeah. So that big bump out goes away. I know that was a concern for the fire department and Doug Frantam, when he, he's out there plowing and trying not to hit things that are in the way.
Any questions from the council that are coming in? Great approach too.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Hey, can I hear what Noah has to say about, does that, that address a concern that we've talked about before?
On the bolt, bolt, bolt?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
That addresses that, right?
Yeah.
I hope so, because I heard the same comment many times.
I'm going to thank all of our presenters tonight, very, very helpful and very interesting in development, and the progress has been made in a number of, really big, big projects. Thank you, Gordy.
Have a good one.
We'll go on now to your department reports, and we'll begin with our Chief of Police, Shay Hanzaker.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that's going on in the state is some correction to the police reform bills that were passed in 2021 that were pretty restrictive. Right now, I have two bills that have been passed and signed by Governor, are in effect now. First bill is House Bill 1719, and this involves the classification of military equipment that they did not want law enforcement to hold in half, which encompassed 50 caliber ammunition or greater in rifles, 12 shotgun, 12-gauge shotgun, still in that realm. And police department, we have two, but they're used for less than lethal. Well, the being-bound rounds that fire out of them are over 50 caliber. Anyways, the legislation, legislators corrected that. It is not considered military equipment, and 12-gauge shotguns that are used is less than lethal, and the less than lethal ammunition is legal, so we, we didn't lose that. The rest of the bill involving military equipment is still, hasn't changed from its passing in 2021. The other bills is House Bill 1735. This is one that cleaned up and did some verification of the use of force, that got very restrictive on law enforcement in the 2021 legislation. They now instead, the easiest way to put it is that we can put people that are in crisis, mental crisis, into safe custody and force them to go up to the hospital if we think they're a danger to themselves or others and need, need to be in a safe place. 2021, when they passed their use of force bill, that prohibited us from touching them, right? We could ask them if they wanted to go to the hospital, but we couldn't force them to go to the hospital because they hadn't committed a crime. Okay? They cleaned up the language in it. It also includes taking children into safe custody, whether it be like for runaways, you know, so we can put hands on, you know, and take them into custody if they want to try to leave for us. The one thing that the bill has not addressed, or we don't think has changed at all, and I'm having WCIA lawyers look into it, attorneys can get their opinion, is temporary custody, or temporary detainments was taken from law enforcement. If we have a situation that we're trying to get control of, and we have some people maybe out of hand, but we think, you know, right now we, we know they're involved, but we don't know if they're suspect or not, we can't put them in cuffs and say, okay, you're not under arrest, but you're being detained. Okay, that got taken from us. So I'm just trying to get clarification on that, if they did any changes on that, but it don't look like it. But it is a swing back forward to us of now being able to help out with people in crisis if we have to force, we take somebody to the hospital that is in dire need of medical attention, either by hospital or mental health. So we're watching that. The other bill that is passed but has not been signed by the Governor yet is the one involving vehicle pursuits. That didn't change very much, but I'll wait till I have the session bill in hand to brief the council on what changes were made to doing vehicle pursuits versus 2021 versus now. And that's all I have for this time. Any, any questions on these bills?
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief, very much. We'll go now to Fire Chief Noah Hall.
So the last several months, we've applied for different grants, FEMA being one of them, Assistant to the firefighting grant, I believe is what it's called. Same one we've got to the life pack. We did go, haven't heard anything, but we went in for that one. Washington State DNR has several grants out, couple of them out now, and a couple of them that we already applied for. We'll see how those go, but that's all I have.
That's good. Thank you. Is Doug Frantam on the line?
He said he doesn't, he said he doesn't have audio.
Pardon me?
Doug said he doesn't have audio, he can't respond.
Oh, no audio.
He doesn't have audio to be able to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's just, he's just listening today.
We'll go now to council business, and we'll begin with proposal to vet. We'll go now to council business and we'll begin with proposal to vacate Grant Street and set up a hearing for that action. Larry?
Okay. Marty already touched on this, that the part of making parking lot A work, the red block on the first page of the documents that he gave you shows that they'd like to create 46 spaces in there. And in order to make that happen, we have requested that we vacate South Grant Street between West Court Street and West Allen. And in accordance with RCW 3579010, the public hearing should be fixed at a point in time, not more than 60 days or less than 20 days after the date of passage of the resolution for that public hearing date. Since we're not at the resolution section, we'll pick that back up when we get to the resolution section. But that's the first part of the action and to vacate that street. And we will have a public hearing set for April 4th, which is the next public, which is the next council meeting that fits within that 20 day and 16 day period. Because Clickatet County is the only one that owns property on all sides, they are the only one that needs to sign the petition for vacation. So that's been done and then we just have to adopt the resolution when we get down to resolutions.
Do we have feedback from the department heads for the city on the vacation of that?
Yes, we talked with Doug, I've talked with Doug quite a bit about it and we seem fine with it. We also talked with, I talked with Noah today. He reiterated that he's fine with that as well. Okay, that concludes my remarks at this point.
Good. Thank you, Larry. And we'll pick it up with the resolutions. The next item on the agenda is RH2 Professional Services Agreement for Wastewater Treatment Plan Improvements. And Eric Smith is on Zoom.
Can we do the okay?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Great, okay. I'll, let me go ahead and can I turn my screen here? Or do you have that PowerPoint that's sent over?
Actually, I've given each of the council members a copy of it. I did not.
Oh, they all have a copy. We'll just run through it real quick. That's fine. Well, yeah, thank you Doug for having me. I figured since it's been a little while since we've talked about the project, I just go through this real quick again about what's included in the document. Talk about the fundamental scope and key as you want. So I'm looking at just the objectives, the second page here. The primary objectives of the project. Again, this is to rehabilitate or build a new solids handling system to take care of this liquid liner issue that has the water bubbles. They can see that in the photo. We're going to construct a new automated grit removal system for the headworks. And then we're going to install iteration basin equipment and partition iteration basins. The major goals are kind of to remedy some of these reliability and redundancy issues, reduce labor related grid salt handling, reduce energy usage with the iteration basin improvements and reduce chemical usage use for PDAZ dusting. The solids handling system, as you probably recall, is going to consist of a piece of dewatering equipment. So I'm on the third page here. So we plan to install some new equipment in a new building out there that will be used to dewater the sludge that settle out and clarify us. And then that will be transferred over to air drying outdoor asphalt pad. And the drying bed should allow you to meet a class B bio solids so that the dry sludge can be land applied in accordance with the lack guidance. The grit removal improvements on the next page. This will be at the headworks. Right now there is no automated grit removal system. And so grit and inorganic particulate matter that comes in with the influence sewage has been, over time, collecting in iteration basins and has built up and there to the point that you have to use quite a bit of iteration energy just to maintain the areas and suspensions. So we need to install an automated grit removal system, something that, you know, will have minimal oversight by the operators. And that's going to include a little bit of reconfiguring of the headworks, collection box, a new grit pump and basically a dewatering classifier for the grit. And that'll operate automatically and the operators will be responsible for basically taking the collected grit out in a empty garbage can or dumpster for landfill disposal. And the next page is the iteration basin improvement. So this is a third major item for the plan. Right now the areas that you can see in the left photo there are, they're aging. There's some more efficient area technology out there. It's basically the areas they have have kind of met their, probably exceeded their intended lives. You've gotten money's worth out of them, but if we're doing a major project, it's time to, time to replace those and you should be able to realize some energy savings because of that. And we think if you're doing that work, it's a good time to look at partitioning the iteration basins. So a little figure on the right I show is basically having an anoxic zone preceding an aerobic zone. And that should allow you to get some denitrification of nitrate, which will ultimately buffer a huge drop in your effluent and hopefully mitigate some of the chemical uses that you have there and also facilitate some additional energy usage. So this is a good and logical time to do, since you're doing a fairly large treatment plant project. Page six is the budget from the facility plan. As you recall, this was a $4 million budget for the whole project. And you were awarded primarily a loan combination fund through the Department of Ecology. The budget here is broken down into three major items that I showed. And highlighted in the red here is that at the time of facility planning, the budgetary line item for engineering design permitting for this work at $460,000. That was based on 15% of the construction total, which is at a planning level, pretty typical for projects of, you know, similar complexity. So that's, this is your overall budget that the loan was based upon. So the second to last page here is what you see probably in your council packet, the key associated with the design and permitting here. And we got a full scope work for each of these task items. If there's anything in particular that we want to discuss. But the major items here would be assisting with technical assistance with the funding administration, providing technical documentation for the city download and to ecology. General project management is very task two. Task three is identify and apply for any grant funding or other potential funding sources if these are identified. This is an item that was just requested by the city. If we don't identify any, we won't use that item, but it's a placeholder in case a grant opportunity is identified. Four is permitting. There is a fairly substantial amount of permitting associated with ecology loan projects. We do need to go through the SERP process. So that's basically the normal SEPA process, but there is a public allowance component. So we've included everything we basically need to do to get through ecology permitting here with the understanding that if there's some public meetings or, you know, omelet stuffers, those type of things, you know, we assume that the city would kind of handle those, but we would provide all technical documentation that you need to get out to residents and meet the permitting requirements for the permitting industry. Task five is the pre-selection of long lead equipment items. So we do have one, at least one piece of equipment, dewatering equipment has a fairly long lead. And we, at least at this time, we think it's pretty to plan for the city to pre-select that equipment and basically get it ordered ahead of the construction contract. So the contractor is not waiting on that piece of equipment. It can be six to eight months. It's been kind of, lead times have been highly variable with kind of coming out of the pandemic here. So we do expect that we're going to need to do a kind of a pre-selection day for some equipment. And then task six and seven are your general, general design of the buildings, the mechanical improvements, everything that's associated with that all the way through. Getting ecology's review and approval of the documents, the construction documents before they go off to bid. And then the other items that were requested to be added in here that were just official items that make sense to do right now would be sewer rate analysis. And that's completed by a consulting group, Doc Coles from FCS. So they will do an analysis of the impact of this law or any new funding that you get on your existing rates. And they'll do a kind of an abbreviated law with your existing rate structure and finances. And if you do that for the sewer side, it makes a lot of sense to do the water side here at the same time. So we've included that in there as task nine. That portion of task nine wouldn't be able to be reimbursed through the ecology law since it's for domestic water, it's not related to wastewater. But it is a logical time to get that done. So this is work primarily by a consulting group. And then task 10 is services during bidding and getting that contractor prepared to do this work. And then on the last page is the, just very basic kind of overall schedule that we see for this. And we intend for in the first half of this year to get permitting complete and help you get your long lead equipment identified and selected. The design would progress through the summer and end of the fall with getting likely this winter. So that construction can be largely completed in 2023. I showed the construction schedule potentially going out into 2024 depending on the lead times of finding for equipment. But the general intent is to get a design ready this year and construct it all as a singular project next year. I just keep going with this. So anyways, that was, that was pretty fast kind of research around it. Is there any particular questions on the scope? If I can, we can look at it or is there anything in particular?
Councilman, any comments or questions? Yes.
I had a couple of questions regarding like the long-term planning. If you're moving from the drying beds to land application, what's required for any testing? What kind of staff resources is that going to, are going to be needed to get that up to land application?
Yeah, they're not very obvious. For a plant your size, you're probably only yearly testing. Somewhere you break between a plant your size yearly and quarterly, but I'm quite sure you're probably yearly testing. And so you have to do your five or three metals testing. You have to do a vector attraction analysis test. These are pretty simple tests. You take a composite sample of a storage slug and you send it off to a library for it to be tested. So it's, it's probably less than $5,000 a year. So I don't have a good quote on it. It may be quite a bit less than that, but I would say $5,000 a year for testing it most.
And what quantity of grit would be produced? And would that be able to be used as fill out there on site? Or does that have to go to the landfill?
It wouldn't be sufficient quantity to have any real significant amount of fill material. And maybe it's probably pretty hard to gauge how much it does eventually have to the other clearly been currently collecting. For a plant your size, I think your normal grit removal is going to probably produce a couple of yards a week. It's during the major big storm events where you get some I I, you can get a fairly significant amount that comes in in a short period. But I'm thinking on an average over a year, it's a yard or two a week. So it's, it's not a ton, but it does, it does build up in the iteration basins. If you have a yard do a week over a year, it's going to be problematic. It's not, not enough to be probably a sort of a resource, I guess.
But and does it, does it require disposal at the landfill versus other locations?
The typical method of disposal is just to have it picked up with your garbage truck pickup for landfill disposal. I don't know if there's, there, I haven't actually dealt with a plant trying to use it as fill material. I have a hunch that would be, there'd be some requirements that we have to meet. I mean, it's, it's sand that's been in contact with raw sewage, right? Sand and grit particulate. So it's really best just probably put in a dumpster and take it, take it away to the landfill.
I did notice an engineer's estimate in the deliverables in the contract, but I, I mean, that'd just be part of the work, I assume?
It should have been in the design, but it is absolutely definitely part of the work. We would, do you want us kind of a preliminary design item to make sure that? The toss that we use, obviously, you know, estimated these back almost three years ago now. We did the facility plan, make sure the equipment toss is still aligned fully expected. But we would want to get an engineer's estimate together and update it one very early on in the design so that we kind of understand that, make sure that we're within the budget of the loan thinking out. And if we need to make some other value engineering adjustments because of cost higher than, you know, we planned three years ago, we want to get from that. So yeah, absolutely, the engineer's estimate is included.
And then on the schedule, there's what looks like three months between the finishing of the design, going out to bid and starting construction. Can that schedule be revamped so that either the design is completed sooner or we give a little bit more lead time for, because I think for especially the scale of this project, you're going to really limit the number of bids and increase the price of the bids with only a three month turnaround between final design and starting construction?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, I think that's not necessarily a requirement to the contractor that we put this out to bid in December and we're wanting to get it drawn in February. I really think this project is in the terms of kind of a construction window, March, April, May, probably largely procuring items for the project, procuring materials. The onsite construction work can be done relatively quickly. In a fairly, you know, abbreviated window if they have everything that they need. So, but yeah, as we get closer, we absolutely did. Three months is kind of for this complexity of a project, I think is pretty, pretty typical. A four to five week bid period plus another month to a month and a half to give them notice to proceed. But if you want to give them more time, absolutely, because you're right. In your location, you know, you don't have a lot of probably mechanical contractors close by. So we want to, we want to make sure we get as much competition as possible. The other thing we really want to look at here is, you know, making sure that the improvements that we're proposing, you know, there's cost effective solutions functions with the type of building construction and that sort of thing. So this schedule is kind of just a high level overview, but I think yeah, absolutely, we can accelerate the design if needed to or spread out the bidding time.
Yeah, I think in this contracting environment, you know, trying to get even six months ahead of it or a year possibly, which, you know, based on this schedule isn't possible. But we're going to go on to be a lot further out than just three months in order to get good bids. You know, people are already filling up for this year as it is. And then lastly.
There is a, from your funding standpoint, I think you're, it's, you have about, typically they have a five year window. So there isn't, this schedule isn't being booked in and by. So there isn't, this schedule isn't being booked in by a funding requirement. You have substantially more time. Ecology hasn't come down on you with a regulatory requirement. You know, you need to get in a salt handle and you're putting by Epstein. I think they've been fairly gracious in that regard. I think we want to show that we're doing everything we can to get it done as soon as possible, but they understand that, you know, you don't want to box yourself into a, a window that's just going to drive up construction costs. So yeah, that I would do.
My last comment would be that maybe pulling the FCS contract out of that and having FCS work directly with the city, just because the questions with FCS are going to be a lot more readily, readily answered by the city staff than the consultants. So it just seems like an extra layer that isn't really necessary.
Yeah, that was something we talked about and for now we put it in, but absolutely I, if he does want to, I would absolutely recommend you work directly with them. That's totally fine. We do want to make sure you get that sewer rate analysis. So your sewer rate analysis wasn't specifically called out in the facility plan. And ecology sometimes can be a little bit, you know, something wasn't included in the facility plan and in the funding application that would consider that ad. I think the sewer rate analysis just fully supports this project. So I'm assuming it can be and should be covered by that construction loan, but just keep that in mind in terms of being reimbursed for that.
All right, I guess one last thing is in that contract, it noted that all the products that you produced are the property of the consultant. And I guess I would recommend that one of the deliverables be the CAD files for the final design. So that's something the city can have and have people as a resource to refer to if there's issues that come up in the future or we need design modifications. That'd be a valuable tool regardless of who we work with or consultant.
Yeah, we, we don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. Do we have something specific in our boilerplate that says we won't do those? I can't recall.
Yeah, I, you named the deliverables and the CAD deliverable isn't one of them and it's in the boilerplate about, you know, the ownership of the items that are produced. So.
Yeah, we, we have no, no problem with that. It's not proprietary or anything like that. We give those as a supply.
All right, thanks, Eric.
Eric, on the, on task three, applying for grant funding, if we're able to get some funding, would that cover part of the $4 million loan or towards, would go towards it if we did get some?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You can find, identify grant money, other funding sources. You have, essentially you have up to $3.8 million through ecology, but if you don't use it all because you get grant money to cover, you can absolutely do that. So we, we all should, if we can identify any other potential funding sources, we can continue to go after it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one. I assume is improvements are taking into consideration future growth in the city?
Yeah, so we did this as a facility plan amendment and the original facility plan had growth projections that showed that capacity was not going to restrain growth within the plan for 20 years now or more. So really we were looking at this, our facility plan amendment, we're really looking at this in terms of the reliability, redundancy and immediate kind of need issues. Your flow and loading is well below your design capacity. So yes, you have substantial available capacity for growth and these, these improvements aren't doing anything to, you know, limit that.
And also typically there's a lifetime attached to projects like this before you're going to need to upgrade again. Is there a projected lifetime on this?
So the improvements here are pretty much all mechanical in nature. I'm thinking about the screw press and the grit removal equipment. You know, generally the mechanical equipment in this application is as a 20-year life. It's technical. Sometimes you get longer than that. Sometimes it's well maintained or shorter than that. Everything else on the project, you know, your asphalt drying out of the building, that's a 40-year life or more. It can be even death of life. It's well, you know, well maintained. So I don't think we've done a, you know, an average length, but on the main medical component basis, I would say the mechanical items, 20 years and the other structural major items are 40 years.
Okay, thank you. Eric, I had a question about task five, the pre-selection of long lead items. That's talking about the drill press, right?
Yeah, specifically talking about the screw press, the mechanical and de-watering equipment there. We, we know that's a long lead item. That's, it, it, it's typically, most of the screw presses are manufactured out of the United States or shipped to the United States and assembled with control, you know, its own control equipment and ancillary equipment all on a, mounted on a scale. So.
We have that on order now?
What's that?
Have, have we already ordered that?
No, 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 not at all. So the process there would be we would put together basically a small set of bid documents that you would send out to manufacturers to bid on that. And they would get you new pricing and then you would permit a kind of a purchase order with, and they would get going on it. So I think in that schedule that I showed, you know, that would be sometime middle of this year, but you'd like to have that process done with sort of eight months to a year to get that equipment on site. Get, so that they contacted you to get a building built and you put it in.
And the only other thing I was wondering about on the project budget facility plan is, is it budgeted in there what it's going to cost to remove everything out of the existing sludge ponds?
We did not include removal of anything in the sludge ponds. And the reason we did that, I think that question came up actually from the original council meetings and I had to look back at my notes, but we, we talked to the public works director about that and up at the time, the sludge we grew was filled with water and sludge. And the most economical way to get rid of that is to let it dry out for a couple of years if you can. And then kind of pile up the sludge and in that process you can get a tear up the liner and whatnot. But then you pile up the sludge and have it, actually the, the process of kind of piling it and turning it over really reduces the water content quite a bit. So you get down to a, a pretty damn small pile and then you have that pulled off. When we talked about that, we said, well, it's not really going to make sense to include in the construction contract because you do have a contractor out here putting in a screw press and then what's he going to do, wait, wait for two years to come back and remove that sludge with you? So that was not included in there. And the thought was that once it's dried out, that could either be done kind of on a small work contract or with city crews. It's not going to be a lot of, a lot of volume that's kind of handled probably when it dries out. But then you do have the liner, but at some point we could even do that in place for, you know, or, or, or remove. But that was a budgeted bit there, but I would say early on in design along with initial construction estimate, we ought to, now knowing that what we're doing is actually been de-watered and we're probably relatively close once we get the screw press, I mean, just being able to get in there and start digging that out, we could look at, you know, what the cost of what the building is and just trying to get that out of it and have a contractor do it all done, done with it all at once. So.
Sounds good. Thanks, Eric.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Eric, we look forward to working with you on this project. I think you laid it out very well and I'm going to ask the council now for authorization to execute the professional services agreement. We need a motion for that.
I'll make that motion. I moved authorize the mayor to execute professional services agreement with RH2 for design services. For the wastewater treatment plant improvements for the city of Goldendale, the amount not to exceed $405,000.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute a professional services agreement with RH2 for design services for the wastewater treatment plant improvements for the city of Goldendale in the amount not to exceed $405,000. Thank you. We have all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all through. Excellent. Thank you very much for the cover lead.
Thank you guys. We appreciate it and look forward to working with you.
We do too. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the well performance assessment that's been carried out and the next step recommendations by Jason Sherrod from Aspect Consulting. Shashen?
Hi, my name is Jason Sherrod. I'm with Aspect Consulting. We were asked by the city to take a look at the city's wells. That was the Coronation Station well and the Basse Well Field. We actually started this project, Aspect was involved originally in the drilling of those wells back in 2001, around that era. And then we took a look at the well performance again in 2016, specifically at the Basse Well Field. Over time, those wells have had some decline in their production. And so that's why we were brought on this, this time again here in 2021, the fall, to take a look at them and see what can be done to increase the yield for these wells. Particularly what happens is what the city was seeing is in the summertime during peak demand, the Basse Well Field, they were having some, some problems with their QI, the instantaneous quantity that's allowed over the city's water rights at the Basse Well Field. The things that can go into causing this decline in yield, usually it's either a equipment problem, there's a problem with a pump, there's a problem with a sensor in the well, or it's a well efficiency problem, that being clogging of the well itself. All of the city's wells will be one well at the Basse Well Field. I think it's Basse One and then the Coronation Station well. They're drilled into the salts, but then the steel casing is perforated. So it's just, it holds in the perforation in those, in the casing itself. One of the wells is still holding just in the, in the salt. So those can be either the offer for material itself or these perforations can get clogged up. Usually it's from some sort of biological clogging by biofilm you often hear. The other thing that can cause the decline in production is just the overall decline in groundwater levels. So we're talking about the saturated thickness in those wells that is able to be pumped out. In 2016, when we looked at the potential reduction in yield, we didn't see any decline in the Basse Well Field area. Groundwater levels were stable, so that was, did not rise to be an issue for, for that area. So what we did this time around is we did a, another site visit. This time we went to the Coronation Station well. The purpose of the site visit this fall was to see if we could just get groundwater level measurements, verify with the city's, that the city's sensors are reading correctly. And then also turn on the wells for a short period of time to measure the flow rate for the discharge out of wells, allowing to water level measurements. And then we also wanted to see the, just the general observation of the wells. Usually there's a access port and we have a really small nano camera that's only three-quarter inch diameter that we can often run down a well to then take a look, to see if we can see any of that biofiling or some other type of issue that might be happening in the well. Unfortunately, the city's wells, we didn't have, there was no access that we could bring that camera down to run down wells. So we were, what we were able to do is, is do those, get water levels in Basse One and Basse Two. At the Coronation Station well, we were not able to get water levels. So we ran our tape down the sounding tube and we either did obstruction or the bottom of the sounding tube, it was, we did an encounter groundwater. So what we then did, if you look at the memorandum we prepared, you'll see there's near the end of it, there's a couple of figures, figure one and figure two. So I'll talk about these figures. Figure one is the Basse Well Field. And so this, this data was provided by the city. This is very valuable information that you guys were collecting. The blue is the groundwater levels. And so you'll see they dropped down quite a bit in that, that, that noise that you see there, that's the pumping level for when the well is on. The green is the flow measurement that the mosquito system is, is recording. So these are all one-minute interval measurements over the last five years. So looking at Basse One, you can see in 2020 and then more so in 2021, that those water levels that those are reporting have, have dropped quite a bit. You'll also notice that there was not any flow coming out or discharge out of those out of Basse One, not much in 2020 or 2021. And that's just kind of an indication the city wasn't pumping that during those period of time. But you do see that the, the water levels are down even though they're not being pumped. The reason for that is interference drawdown. That can be a neighboring well that's pumping and their pumping is affecting the, the water levels in that well. There is also some interference with the Basse Well Two where you can see that, you can see that if you look, it's kind of hard to explain, but just to the left of the 2020 tick mark, you'll see a, a large drawdown in the Basse One figure. If you go straight down into the next figure with Basse Well Two, you can see there's, the Basse Well Two was not pumping, there's no green, but there's a little bit of drawdown there and that's likely that interference drawdown of pumping Basse One affecting Well Two. What you can see in Well Two, you're kind of going bigger in the year, is it also has this decline in pumping levels going into 2020 and 2022. And, and these, you can also see there that the flow rate is also kind of going down. If you kind of follow your eye through that green, through the middle of it, it's, it's a little bit lower than it was in, in previous years. And the drawdown for those pumping levels are larger than what they were in previous years. So this is, this can be also due to that interference drawdown from neighboring wells. The other component of this that we've noticed from our 2015 and then again 2021 well performance is that particularly well number one is seeing a decline in efficiency. And that efficiency is again due to that potentially clogging in the well. And so we, we look at that through a calculation, which is really how much flow can pump out of the well and how much is the well going to draw down water levels and that's a specific capacity. Usually what, that's a good kind of calculation to keep track of over time because as a well, specific capacity drops 10%, you start, really start thinking about rehabilitating the well. And that can be the simplest rushing the well- And that can be as simple as rushing the well, pumping up that sediment. It can be as invasive as using chemicals to help break down whatever is in your material. Once you get to 20% reduction in specific capacity, you're at a point where you start getting into a situation where it's, it can almost be not economical to rehabilitate the well to get to the previous performance of where it was at. And if it gets beyond that, if you start getting into like a 50% type of reduction, you start getting into a situation where it can be, it may be more economical just to drill it in. So with Bassett one, what we saw in 2015 was there was, there was about a 15% reduction in the specific capacity. And then this year, when we went back and did a really short pumping test, we saw that that has increased to that over 25% reduction in the specific capacity. So the interference drawdown that we're seeing and the reduction in specific capacity is likely what's leading to the low yield that the city's experiencing from Bassett one. Bassett two, when we looked at that well in 2017, we didn't really see a huge change in reduction of specific capacity. This year, it looked like there was, that there had been some degradation in that well. But you know, that's, we're showing here about 11%. But again, this was a really short pumping test, usually we're going to do this, it's more of a longer pumping test, a four hour step rate test. So that's Bassett one, what we found. Our recommendation for the Bassett well field is to collect some additional information as far as regarding the biological chemical condition of the well. That information can help inform rehabilitation options and then implement that work at a later rate so we could develop a rehabilitation plan for Bassett one. We would also take a look at Bassett well, excuse me, well two, again to, they're likely to have kind of the same, same kind of issues as far as bacteria that might be leading to clogging of the well. These wells completed in the granites, the salts, the water pump assaults, they can either have iron oxidizing bacteria that starts growing due to oxygen addition of the water, and then due to the mineral makeup of the rocks, you know, there can be sulfide minerals that then you get into sulfate reducing bacteria that can grow farther out into the aquifer. And so they couldn't get this whole community negative feedback system going where they start to proliferate. So we want to, that's the reason for looking at the biological chemical conditions of the wells, so they develop the right treatment. So then, at the Coronation Station well, this is the one that, if you look at the next figure, figure two, the, this is the one that made my heart drop when we started looking at this data. You can see in 2018, at that time period, there was a dramatic drop in the buoyed box, which is the water levels. Also, as you might recall, we wanted to be able to get a water level improvement out there in the fall of 2021. So this one, we're not sure exactly if this is a sensor there, because the change in water level is, it's a dramatic and not really a shape that you tend to see with this type of data. So talking to Andy, it sounds like the pressure transducer that's in that well was replaced in 2018. So one of our thoughts is the sensor's not calibrated correctly or it's not set to the right depth, that could be an issue of that. However, as you can see, it's still, it's recording data and it had some water level, some water above the sensor, and it's continued to decline over the years. So with, and then the bottom figure, what it shows is, is again the water level data, but we included the flow that's coming out of the spring. And so the reason we did that is because the Coronation Station well is completed in the same core of all canics, and the water coming out of the, out of the spring is also out of that same formation. So we wanted to show that there's not a decline in the flow coming out of the springs, the discharging of the springs, but which if there was an aquifer problem or showing, seeing declining groundwater levels, we would likely see those as well at the spring. The spring should have some sort of reduction in flow. So for the Coronation Station, we weren't able to answer if we, if anyone knew if we have a, is it a pump and sensor issue, is it a well efficiency issue, or is it a aquifer, groundwater decline issue? So our recommendation for the Coronation Station well is to bring on a pump service contractor to pull that pump, run a video down the well, evaluate the pump, evaluate the sensor, do the, clean up the well, get in on what the video shows, and then do a pumping test on the well and reinstall whatever equipment's necessary, whether that's refurbishing the steam pump, or if that pump is too far gone, getting a new pump into that well. That's what I have. Any questions?
Questions or comments from the council? Yes, Steve.
How does the Cojim plant figure out this?
Do you think that pools more water than you expect? Well, there is evidence more of that.
I'm trying to...
Wasn't that the initial reason for getting Bassett one?
Bassett one, Bassett two were designed to be mostly its water usage to the Cojim plant. But they built it in such a way that we left over some for the city, because they didn't, because we limited them on how much they could use.
Well, it's kind of seasonal also. I mean, their production is seasonal.
Right. Although it's been a little bit more this year than it has been in years past. It's mainly due to the fact that they're taking down other energy plants, other energy plants, like Kohl's.
Taking off water.
Taking offline. So there's a need for more power and this is one place where they can get it. But when they first built the plant, they built it in such a way that they gave us more water right than they use. So it's supposed to be an overreach that makes our system better and more redundant, because now we have not the spring source, we have the Coronation Station well source and the Bassett well field. So we're set up pretty well, however, and I haven't seen it in the water system.
But I suppose they're involved, the Cojim is involved with this water issue.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, but we're handling all of it?
Oh, well, they, they built it and turned it over to us. So they built the well systems and they built the transmission line, and then they gave that back to us. For us to maintain.
They're a water customer now.
And we're a water customer now, that's correct.
So in other words, we sell water to them?
But getting back to it, Jason, Jason's talking about, he was, we need to do some more investigation, especially pull the, pulling the pump at the Coronation Station well and do some more work in the Bassett one and two, make sure that we're maximizing our yield to the system. Making sure that we know why there's decline in the well, in the water supply at the Coronation Station well, especially.
Looks like there could be a number of reasons.
Right. So the question for us to answer tonight is should we have Jason go ahead and their firm, Aspet Consulting, come up with a proposal for us to consider about next steps? We don't have to commit to that tonight, but I think we need to have a proposal presented at our next council meeting to move forward. But I think it's important, especially with regard to the decline, declines that we're seeing, we need to know and have more information and find out why.
Give me the comments or questions.
Sure. How about the third street well?
I had all kinds of problems.
That's not funny. Do we just need to concur?
Just give me directions, ask them for a proposal on dealing with next steps.
Yep.
Okay.
Concur.
Jason, you got that? Can you provide that to me the next few days? I guess he's...
He's not moving.
He froze.
Okay, well, we just want to pursue a proposal to deal with the next steps that you outlined in your report. If you could get that to me later on this week, that'd be great.
Will do. Thank you very much for your time, everyone.
Jason, we want to thank you not only for the report, but also the next steps report that you gave us, advice that you gave us, which is very, very helpful to us. Thank you. We're looking forward to working with you. Thank you. Next item for the council is a notice of award for airport civil work. And Corley McFarlane is on Zoom to give us that award. Corley? There is.
Good evening, you're again, can you hear me?
Yes.
For Larry, Larry, good evening.
Good evening.
Council, good evening. Glad to be here again. Larry, anything you want to talk to, you want to just launch in?
Just go ahead and review your notice of award and what do you recommend, and then we'll follow up from there.
Perfect. Okay, well, quick recap. So was here not too long ago, so I don't think we need to spend a lot of time on the past, but happy to answer questions. But a month ago exactly, we were here to talk about the status of the project and walked away from that meeting with consent to go ahead and rebid the site development project in the new location coordinated with the reported advisory board. So, but then we went and repackaged the bid, bid it, and tonight, here to talk about the specific bids we received for the site development work. And just a quick recap for the group, that's kind of what we deemed phase two of the project. In fact, a little ways now, phase one was the contract for the fuel system equipment procurement. And we did that in advance of the site development work due to the long lead times that we're seeing right now. So happy to report, we've received three bids for the site development work. Always look at the bid spread, and so the bids range from $168,800 and change up to $171,800 overtake. And so that's less than a $3,000 spread or about 1.75%. So, you know, when we look at that, that gives us confidence that these are good bid numbers. Do want to recognize the spread that I presented last week, last, well, two meetings ago, last meeting, I was at, is within that number, however, the engineer's estimate that we officially published was about 18% lower than these costs. But going through the prices that we received, very comfortable with them. And I can see on some of the bid items, we lined up with the bidders and in a couple of the bid items, the bidders were higher, but comfortable again with those increased costs from the bidders based on what we're seeing in the industry trends right now. And then just kind of also the other, the other part that we performed in this review is looking through the apparent low bidder's document to confirm that they indeed have a responsive bid. And so what that means, right, that they meet all the standards and that they turned in all the necessary paperwork. And so with that, kind of a quick recap there, with that, tonight, here to present you our recommendation to award this project to the apparent low bidder, and that's Eminem excavating at the river for the fuel system site development work. And would that kind of open it up, take a pause here, open it up to any questions or thoughts, and then we can end this discussion with my kind of recommendations for moving forward.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments, Corley? I need authorization to execute a notice of award for aircraft fueling site development and electrical improvement project. Do we have a motion of that effect?
Make the motion as mentioned.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to authorize the mayor to execute a notice of award for the aircraft fueling site development and electrical improvements project to Eminem Excavating LLC in the amount of $168,840. If there are further comments?
Where's the funding come from for this?
Comes out of a capital approval grant from the state of Washington.
Grant funds. If there are no further comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here none? Motion passes unanimously. Very patient commissioner we got here.
Oh, I'm used to meetings like this one.
I know, but I hate doing it.
I hear about five hours longer than that.
The next item is the resolution to vacate Grant Street. This is, as you said, a public hearing, and Larry will present this resolution.
Well, we talked about this at several points tonight, but this is the actual resolution that we filed, and it basically says that the clerk has received the petition. The petition is to the legislative authority to vacate Grant Street between Gordon and Allen of Golden's Second Edition, and that we're doing this in accordance with RCW 3597. And this resolution will hereby initiate the procedures to vacate Grant Street and establish and to set a public hearing date for that request and that petition for April 4th at the hour of 7:00 PM in the council chambers here at city hall. So we just need a motion to approve resolution 721 to continue with this process.
Question?
Yes, Steve.
This resolution is just establishing the process to move forward, and the next step would be public hearing. And then it will still have to come before the city council to okay it or not.
Yes, there's a, after the public hearing, then there would be an ordinance presented and voted on at that time before the council.
It'd be ready to at that time, yes.
Mayor, I so move to approve the resolution number 721.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a resolution number 721 authorizing the city clerk to set a public hearing on the petition to vacate. It's been moved and seconded to approve a resolution number 721 authorizing the city clerk to set a public hearing on the petition to vacate Grant Street between Court and Allen Streets on April 4th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. If there aren't further questions, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm going to abstain.
Abstain, I remember we talked about it. One nay, one abstention and the rest are all ayes. And so we, the motion passes. Thank you both, all of you. And April 4th, everything should be in place there before to get that.
Would you like us here in case there's any citizen questions that you can't answer?
Yes.
There aren't a lot, but it'd be a good idea, yes. Okay, the next item. Okay, that's set between the lines. The next item is a report of officers and city administrator. And we'll begin with Larry Bellamy, our city administrator.
Okay, I just want to add to what we talked about tonight. We need to get started. Tourism season is right around the corner and I believe it's time to get started on an event committee meeting to especially talk about community days and how we're going to organize that event. And to get moving on the planning for it so that we're ready to go by July 9th or, I think, July 8th, 9th, or 10th, I think. So that, I have suggested that we meet next Monday night at 7:00. Is that okay with the event committee?
Yep, it's fine with me.
Okay. And we might also want to make sure that we are as well coordinated. If you're going to be there, Dave, you can coordinate and help us know what's going on with the time capsule project.
Sure, sure.
It's been a good committee.
Yeah.
They've worked hard.
Okay, so are we good with that? March 14th at 7:00? And then we will send out a notice to the event committee people that are interested in it. Next, the bid opening for buyer street project, which will be an important one, is scheduled for the 23rd of March at 2:00 PM. So that's another potential project that we're going to be working on and it's in the bidding phase right now. So bid opening will be next, next March, March 23rd, 2:00. And then we will hopefully get the notice of award out. The plan is to get it out on April 4th to bring you another notice of award for that project.
April 4th, very good, coming up quick.
Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, thank you. Our council members will begin with Eddie.
Want to go ahead?
Roberto? Michael?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just kind of want to make a comment on maybe if we have time, we could talk about the kitchen in the Econdy Park, bring it up. I know it's maybe not on the this year's agenda, maybe we can kind of still work on it a little bit. I can't.
Well, it certainly is something we can touch on with our new special committee.
Yeah, right, the new parks committee, yeah, right, right, okay.
Is that parks committee is going to come up, one of the first things was to deal with the, come with, come with a, prepare to proceed on a comprehensive park plan. And I think, and I'll just make a couple of comments, because I think it should involve the city, the county, and the state.
I do too.
And including the observatory. I think we need a comprehensive central, Clickted County Park Plan.
Very worthwhile.
We who live in the center use Golden Bill as the headquarters, so to speak. There's, there's stuff for everybody.
Right. I also, another comment is, uh, we've talked about getting an employee to do the flowers. We're kind of.
We are going to go out and get advertised for employee. We think the flowers are going to be ready sometime in mid-May.
Okay.
And so it's, it's probably about the time to start advertising for that.
Yeah, okay.
But we talked, I think, they even had suggested that maybe that was something we should do at a meeting or two ago in the council. And I think we talked amongst ourselves and we feel that's the best approach.
Okay. By the way, I think we've had a very good meeting tonight. We're moving along, we've got a lot accomplished, so very good meeting.
We'll go now to Steve.
Oh, now, now you're talking about an employee, that would be a public works employee.
Right. Who's, who's main focus would be to keep the flowers and then if there are other jobs, depending on the qualification of the person, you might be able to have them work on the crew as well. That has seemed to work well in the past if they're able to stay on and, and make and show a good work ethic, you know, maybe there's an opportunity there to keep them.
We're too short, we're too personnel down anyway.
Right, this works well.
It's got to the right direction.
To take an advanced look at that person.
We've talked about setting a, a regular scheduled, or regular schedule for the public works committee. We had talked about that at least once a month. And at this point, I would settle for just scheduling the next meeting.
Okay. Well, we can schedule it, I like to meet on Mondays. It seems to work well for most council and most, most council members try to keep Mondays open, I think. And so we could have a meeting on the 28th of March.
Okay, and how about the traffic safety committee? It'd be nice to get that data.
We could always meet earlier in the afternoon and maybe.
Do them both?
Do them both.
We've done that a couple of times.
Sounds good.
The traffic safety committee would be at 3:00 and the public works committee would be at 7:00. Is that sound right, Steve?
3:00 and 7:00?
Yeah.
Traffic safety first?
Yes.
At 7:00?
You want to make it earlier?
It'd be nice.
Let's do it at 6:00.
If you ask, how about 5:00? 4:00? Or right after that, 4:00?
Well, you, public works, who's on the public works committee?
Well, I'm, I'm on the public works, but then like Lauren, he's still working on 4:00 or 5:00.
You have a department that needs to know.
Do 5:00 or later.
5:00, okay. For, for public works?
Yes.
And.
I forgot who's other.
Steve.
Steve, Lauren and.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we can still keep, I thought you said get 3:00?
Yes.
All right, sounds good, thank you. And did we ever establish a committee? Lauren made the motion.
For the parks, you're talking about?
I think the mayor.
Yes, I think so.
Will handle that. Maybe I.
Somewhere that.
Want to scrub the process?
Yeah, I think it's in the report that's laid out. That, that parks committee has a lot to do ahead, or explain itself quite a bit of work, so. Do you want to know?
Should we, should we, I mean, I would volunteer as a city council member to participate, but I thought we had a mentor to the community and other agencies involved.
Right.
So I don't know if we can do that now or you want to know which council members are interested at this time?
Oh, as far as who's interested, yes. Interested in?
I'll be interested as well.
Okay. Steve, Dave Jones, and Roberto wants to go. That'll be a very valuable work for the council. And the public, those are public meetings, so hopefully we'll have input from others as well in the meetings.
And there'll be other committee members as well, correct?
Yes, there will be, no, that's sort of from the council.
Right.
Okay, we've got that done.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, I was excited to see the picture of the ramp going up to the roof of the observatory in this picture you presented earlier because, you know, I've been talking with Troy Carpenter out there at the observatory about that ramp and, you know, not, it's not only that it'll look really nice and be great for people, but it's who it's really going to be great for is you got to think about handicap people, especially like a kid in a wheelchair. Right now, if you're a kid in a wheelchair, you have no way of looking through a telescope. To look through a telescope, you got to be able, right now, you have to be able to climb up the stair, the staircase. If they can get that ramp built and then put a telescope up there, the plan is so a kid in a wheelchair can go up that ramp onto the roof and will have a telescope up there that he can look through right out of his wheelchair. And, you know, I think, I think that's really the big pushing point that, you know, I know that's a state park and us as a city doesn't, don't really have much to do with that, but man, I think that would be really great if it gets pushed as, hey, we got to be able to make it so people who are handicapped can look through a telescope too. But I just wanted to say I was really excited to see this picture of the ramp because, man, I'd really like to see that get done. I don't know who I have to talk to about it, I mean, I mean, it'd be, it'd be really great. And, you know, if everybody knows, next year is the 50th anniversary of the library, of the observatory being built. And man, how nice would it be to have that ramp? That might be too fast for them to have that ramp built, but, you know, if anybody out there on the YouTube can get this ramp built, that would be really nice. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. Before we go on, we need to go, have a motion to go past 9:00.
Oh.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting past 9:00. All in favor?
Aye.
Really appreciate it. Everybody looks very tired here and there. Appreciate everybody being here. Lauren, your remarks, your comments?
Uh, just a couple of past topics. One is the issue that we approved updating the city code permitting process language. I can't remember what organization puts that out.
Is this the one we did with the ordinance committee?
Yes. But didn't, didn't we pass that through city council to update the building codes?
Not yet.
Oh, good. So there's a question out there about whether or not the building codes can be updated without updating the cost increases as well, because our thought was we want to be current with the building code language, but we wanted to encourage development, especially for residential development because of housing shortage. But a question came up as to whether or not that code language has to include an increase in permit fees or if the permit fees can remain as they are now.
You do not have to raise the permit fees if you don't want to. But we are lagging behind in the, the permit fees are based on square footage and value of certain types of construction. We haven't changed the values graph for 15 years probably. But the values have increased over time. So we have not kept that, kept up with the values. But if you want us to leave the values as they are, we can do that.
Well, I think that was what came out of the ordinance committee, was we're going to leave the values as is, correct? And we need to revisit that.
We need to revisit.
Okay, but that sounds good.
I thought one thing and you thought another.
Correct.
We just need to get back, I won't do anything until we get back together.
Okay, sounds good. We'll get a discussion in office.
Okay, yes, thanks, Lauren.
Uh, and then the other item was, really appreciate Steve Johnson bringing forward the increasing the volunteer firefighters stipend pay.
Stipend.
Yeah. But I think one thing we missed out on that was coordinating with NOAA ahead of time and thinking about where that comes from out of the budget. I know when I thought about that, I thought it was fairly minimal when we looked at the overall budget, but if it's coming out of just the fire budget, it's a fairly significant percentage. And so I would just suggest that Mary, Larry, you could bring back to us some alternatives to change the budget so that more of that comes out of the general fund or some more of the general fund goes into the fire budget, so it's not at such a significant percentage back to the department's budget.
Okay? Can you do that?
That's it.
Ellie? Okay. On the mayor's remarks, I'd like to go back and look at the RIDS. That was an incredible experience to be a part of the RIDS project and the team that built that, both to look back at what we have and then to look forward to where we want to go. And that is a tremendous benefit to a city, a county, or state to look at where they want to go. And I think we're going to get a lot of very valuable development and, and progress on the RIDS project. Excellent work, appreciate it very much for all of those that benefited from the discussions and things we looked at. And if you, if anybody ever tells you, well, Golden Dale's not doing much, please look at all those different projects that are either going or will be going to, it's all there. And it will help us explain exactly what Golden Dale does. It's, I think it's very, very positive. And with that, we'll go to public comments. Anyone want to hear a public comment? Anybody? Roger?
Roger.
Sorry.
Now, I understand you're going to have an executive session and I heard the commissioner, I'm sorry, asked you if you would vote after that session, because of course you can't vote in executive session, but you could come out in a regular session again and vote. The question is, if you're planning to do that, would like to stick around and report after the session, we need to work that out.
Okay, so what we're going to do in the executive session is talk about the price at which we would offer a piece of property for sale in our industrial park. If.
We shouldn't be able to just mute them.
So the question is, are you going to come back in the session and vote on it or not?
Well, I just got a suggestion, we could mute you and then.
That'd be perfect, yeah.
And then just stay on and we'll have a decision for you afterwards.
That'd be great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Courtney, upcoming?
Um, county.
Hello?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
We don't have to do that.
Sorry. The county has a open house tomorrow for the new building, so if you haven't come by and seen it, there's from 4:00 to 6:00. We have light refreshments and we'll take you around and show you what we've, what we've accomplished so far.
Is there a charge?
What's that?
Is there a charge?
No, there's no charge.
Somehow there might be a charge.
Thank you.
Dave, Dave Jones wants to know if there's going to be pie.
Usually there's pie at those kind of things.
Cake, cookies, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for other comment? If not, we'll go to executive session. We'll need you clear the room from that. Thanks, everybody, for being here and for working so hard.